Welcome to Across the Isle. My name is Gail Garbrandt and thank you so much for tuning in. We are still continuing in our pre-primary segment of the show for the May 2, 2017 primary. For those of you who have not yet voted, early voting is ongoing as I speak. And you can go into the Tuscarus County Board of Elections and cast your ballot up until the day before the election. And then I know a lot of you are traditional voters and you like to go to your polling place and see all your friends. So, May 2 is Election Day. And every election is important and we know that you're going to get out there and vote. The show is on TV2 on Tuesdays at 7:00 PM and again on Fridays at 4:30 PM. If that doesn't fit with your schedule or your family activities, not to worry because you can catch us on WJERTV2.com under Community Program. Please look for Across the Isle and you'll find the show. You can also, for those of you who don't have access to TV2 cable, you can go on YouTube and search for Across the Isle, TV2, New Philadelphia, Ohio. And you'll not only find the current segments of the show, but also the past two years that you can look at and enjoy if you'd like. I'm very glad to have you all here today. And we have three very special guests. With me today are all three of our Tuscarus County Commissioners. So, for those of you who don't know them, to my right is Commissioner Chris Abuel and then Commissioner Joe Shuretti and then finally Commissioner Kerry Metzger. So gentlemen, thank you so much for coming and taking time out of your busy schedules to have a talk with our voters and our citizens about what's going on with the election in Tuscarus County.
Well, thanks for inviting us.
Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity.
You're very welcome. For those of you who have been watching the show, we had Larry Lindberg on as a guest, who is our county auditor. And he was talking about the renewal of the sales tax, which is on the ballot in all 81 precincts in Tuscarus County. So, no matter where you live in the county, that's something that you'll be asked to vote on, May 2. Or if you engage in early voting or absentee voting, you would be voting on that on the ballot. So, I had invited the Commissioners today to give us a different perspective on the renewal of the sales tax. Now, Mr. Lindberg did a great job talking about the finances and, you know, what percentage of the monies go to law enforcement and other services for the county. But this is really a tax that touches a tremendous number of people. And, you know, before we go on and talk a little bit about the logistics of the tax and what it's used for, I know that the Commissioners are very good at being fiscally responsible. And you do have a check with the state of Ohio and recently went through that process. And Commissioner Abuel, can you tell me about how that works and what assessment was done? And it was the state auditor's office and how Tuscarus County fared for our viewers?
Absolutely. The sheet that I brought today is, it shows 17 indicators. 16 of the 17 indicators had the, Tuscarus County had the highest rating that we could get. The only one that had a low rating was our capital projects. And the reason for that is they look at our capital projects as our buildings and our vehicles as well. Our buildings came in about 43 percentile, but the vehicles came in over 50%. And once they go over 50%, where they show depreciation, they look at that as a capital project that needs replaced. We have had about $330,000 to work with this year with our capital projects. And we don't have a whole lot of money to work with because over time, and you'll learn a little bit more about that, and I'm sure Auditor Lindberg had talked about it too, that we have lost revenue sources from the state on local government funds and some tangible personal property and looming MCO dollars that we potentially may lose. But on this particular indicator, the state of Ohio has said, "We're doing a good job financially." And with those indicators, with the vehicles that were over, looking at the depreciation, we had some vehicles that was over 100,000 miles. So, that's what they were looking at as being depreciated. But we replaced three cruisers this year and we have a rotating basis that we do that. But some of the vehicles, we keep well over 100,000 miles because we want to get our best bang out of the buck.
Sure.
So, we use a lot of those vehicles for running subpoenas between the county, around the county and running prisoners between the jail and the courthouse. So, we thought this was a very good grade card for us because again, out of the 17 indicators, we got the highest rating you could get out of 16. And the only cautionary was the capital projects. And again, we only have so much money to work with. So, this year we replaced, we're replacing a roof at the Health Department. We replaced three cruisers at the Sheriff's Department and we're replacing some IT software in the courthouse.
You know, I don't think most people realize the enormous amount of responsibility that the Commissioners have for funding all these projects. Most people would think, "Oh, gosh, if the Health Department's roof's going bad, then the Health Department has to put a new roof on and pay for it." If there's a, if there's a police car or cruiser that is over mileage and perhaps not safe anymore, then it's up to the Police Department to replace that. But that's not the case, correct?
Well, the Sheriff's Department, we're responsible for their vehicles. We operate the Sheriff's Department through the funding source, but of course, the sheriff operates the Sheriff's Department. We have three different funds, basically within a fund at the Sheriff's Department. You have the 911, you have the road deputies, and you also have the housing of the prisoners internally, which is, so you really have kind of three different departments within one department.
Okay. Well, now that the viewers have had a chance to hear about the report from the state auditor, David Yost, about the county's performance financially, and of course, we're very pleased that Tuscarus County received very high marks, I want to go back to our discussion of the renewal of the sales tax. This is a very important issue on the ballot. I know a lot of people only vote presidential years because they say that's really the only election. But for those of us who are engaged in the process, we know that there's no such thing as an off-year in politics and in campaigns and elections. So, I'd like to hear a little bit from you about some of the things, or some of the ways that this sales tax renewal is going to help people in Tuscarus County and how many lives it touches and in what areas that sales tax is so, so important. Because without it, you know, there may be fewer services or programs would exist, would cease to exist.
Well, yeah.
One of the things is with the, with the sales tax itself, we are kind of mandated to fund some 50 different programs throughout. And that could be an agency, it could be a department, or it could be a fund. Because there are certain funds that have to be funded because the state says, you know, that's what we have to do. So, out of the general fund money, of which the sales tax is the majority revenue that comes out of the general fund, we have to fund all those different programs. Now, somewhere around 70% plus deals with public safety and the judicial system. The rest of the pie, which is so much smaller, around, you know, let's say 30%, is all the other services that we provide, such as the auditor's office, real estate, treasurer's office with tax collection, recorder's office, records deeds, map office, the, and so there are a number of those types of programs. But we also fund like foster care out of the sales tax. So, unfortunately, kids have many more problems than they've had in the past. And we've been funding out of the general fund, like you said, of which the sales tax is the majority part of that fund, almost between 1.8 million and 2.5 million. It's dependent upon the number of kids that are taken, taken out of the home and have to go into foster care setting because of circumstances back in the home. So, we deal with that. That takes a fairly large piece of the general fund that comes from the, from the revenue that we have within the general fund itself. So, there are a number of different programs. We fund what's called multi-county juvenile attention system, which is up, you know, we have our own facility here, but we're part of a region. And it costs us over a million dollars a year to help, in cooperation with the other counties, to fund that operations for the kids that have gotten in trouble. So, there are just a myriad of things that we do with those general fund dollars. And like you said, the sales tax is the vast majority of that. If you want to talk about dependency on it, when I first started, I first started, I was elected Commissioner in 2003. In 2004 and 2005, of all the revenues that come in to the county to pay for county-wide operations, 45%, I believe, 44 to 45% was the sales tax. But because, and now Commissioner Abuel's been an advocate on this, because of all the different reductions that we've had coming from the state and the like, that now is up to 57.2%. So, the sales tax is critically important for us to be able to provide those funds for those different programs.
Thank you. Well, we're going to be back in just a few more minutes with more Across the Isle, so please stay tuned.
For the best dining in Northeast Ohio, you need to go and check out John and Cindy Elsasser's Canal Tavern of Zorr. Nestled just outside the historic town of Zorr, Ohio, the Canal Tavern offers every patron an amazing dining experience, including great food, superior customer service, and a comfortable, unique atmosphere. The Canal Tavern is located at 8806 Topath Road in Bolivar, Ohio, and reservations can be made by calling 330-874-4444. The Canal Tavern of Zorr, where history meets great food.
Myers &amp; Miller Podiatry provides complete foot and ankle care to patients of all ages. The practice was established in 2000 by Dr. Adam Myers and has grown to include Dr. Andy Miller in 2007, Dr. Jason Bakich in 2010, and most recently, Dr. Kristen Henry in 2015. Our core values of respect and honesty are the basis for how we manage our practice. And we continue to grow by building relationships with our patients in order to better serve their needs. Myers &amp; Miller Podiatry serves Tuscarawas and Holmes Counties with offices in Dover, Sugar Creek, Newcomers Town, Millersburg, and our newest location in New Yorksville. Let's get started with building our relationship.
Welcome back to Across the Isle. My name is Gail Garbrandt and my special guests today are all three of our Tuscarus County Commissioners, Chris Abuel, Joe Shuretti, and Kerry Metzger. We have been spending some time talking about the importance of the renewal of the sales tax, which is on the ballot May 2 in all 81 precincts in Tuscarus County. And so, we're going to continue with our discussion. And Kerry, I wanted to go back to a point that you had made about one of the many, many programs that the sales tax funds is foster care. And for those of you who drive by the courthouse, which I think almost everybody who lives in the county at some point drives by the courthouse, last week I noticed all the pinwheels on the steps of the courthouse, which represented the number of calls and cases of children who had, who are suffering from neglect or abuse in our county. And it was just heart-wrenching to see how very many of those cases there are. So, just another really important program. And Commissioner Metzger mentioned 50, almost maybe more than 50 programs and agencies that that sales tax does fund. So, it is very, very crucial. And back to Commissioner Abuel's point, we have seen continually over time, a loss of funding, not only from the state of Ohio, but from the federal government as well. And Commissioner Metzger had mentioned too, that we have these mandates, which means it's an order to act, you can't get out of it, you have to do it. And even though you have less money, it's always been amazing to me that state and more so, local governments find ways to fund those things that are important to the people. Because we all want protection, we all want healthy communities, we all want to know our children are safe and live in a very wholesome place where they can grow up and learn the proper ideals to become responsible citizens.
Well, there's a number of things that can happen too with child abuse. You know, the child could be removed from the home. And if it's associated, if anything is associated with law enforcement that would be illegal with those activities, say that there's, because the opioid epidemic is so, going on so strongly right now. If an apparent would have to be removed and from their children to be put in incarceration or go to community corrections, so you're going through your judicial system, you're going through your community corrections, potentially that should try to divert from going to jail and you've got, or you're going into jail.
Or treatment, too.
Or treatment, and those children are going into foster care. So, there's a number of different departments that are affected by something that would be illegal activities that would cause a child to be removed from the home. So, there's multiple different departments that would be involved in that. And of course, there's always a cost associated with it. But the most important thing is absolutely, we all attended yesterday, the Pinwheels for Prevention Program that they had out at York School, which was teaching the kids how to, you know, tell an adult or somebody, an authority, that if they know of something that's going on that isn't right with themselves or with their friends and things like that. So, it was a very good program, but there's a thousand pinwheels on the courthouse steps. And that's, as you said, that's heart-wrenching when you think about the number of kids that are affected by that.
Sure, sure. And kids are smart, you know, but I think a lot of young people today just don't have the coping skills they need to deal with the complex problems that they find themselves in. So, it's a challenge for all of us as a community. So, let's move on and talk about some of the other important things. Commissioner Shuretti, your favorite things that the sales tax is going to fund are the things that stand out to you as, and I know they're all important and it's hard to pick. But just to give our viewers an idea of how vast the sales, the sales tax is, a big blanket, financial blanket.
Huge. I mean, if you look at it from the perspective of the private sector, it would be, it would be like having your biggest customer, you know, turn its back on a corporation. And, you know, the 80/20 rule, where that large customer may be generating 80% of the funds, that's, it's a little bit analogous to what we have here. We have, you know, close to 60% coming from the sales tax for the county. But it just shows how important and vital for the 911 system. I think that was mentioned. I think, you know, that is something that touches all of our lives. And, but you know, the idea too, that we are such a, and I've said this at the chamber meeting, we're such a staycation county, where people come here and they go to Dennison Depot, they go to Fort Lawrence.
There's a lot of history.
You know, we have 77 gone down us like a zipper, you know, so we're easily accessible as opposed to maybe Carroll County or some of the other counties that don't have interstate. And so, you know, we're able to capture a lot of the outside dollars by having a sales tax that funds many of the operations that Commissioner Abuel and Commissioner Metzger talked about. And so, you know, you see the wisdom of that. And at the same time, there is other revenue streams out there, like property tax, where other counties have attacked, you know, the property tax because they had to, where we're the eighth lowest in the state of Ohio. So, there's great wisdom, the mechanism fits us, you know, based on our proximity and based on all the attributes that we have. So, you know, it's, I hope people realize that and put it in perspective, that other counties have individual levies that pay for 911, that pay for adoption services, like Commissioner Metzger said, and the like. We don't have those levied against us, you know. And we're smart, we're smart like a fox, you could say, because we have outside dollars coming in, supporting those operations that we all benefit from.
Yeah, that's a cool. I was just going to add, he mentioned a couple of things. It's kind of part of our stump speech that we put out there. Our sales taxes, we're the fourth, there's only four other counties in the state of Ohio, the 88 counties have a lower sales tax than we have.
So, it's reasonable.
It's a 1%. It could be one and a half, and it's a 1% renewal is what we're requesting.
Well, and I know a lot of people like to go away to shop sometimes and go to Columbus or Cleveland. And man, what a surprise, right? Go up to Beachwood, the sales tax is eight or nine percent. Go to Columbus and it's seven or eight or nine percent. And you come back home and you're like, "Wow."
Yeah, there's only four other counties in the state of Ohio out of the 88 that's lower than Tuscarus County. And as Commissioner Shuretti mentioned, that our property tax is the eighth lowest in the state out of 88 counties. And we don't have the additional levies that all the other counties have. So, we think that we're doing a very good job financially, but we need to continue to be able to provide those type of services. And without the sales tax, we wouldn't be able to do that. It's about, it's over $13 million of our budget.
Commissioner Metzger.
Well, I was just going, you know, going to say just to what Commissioner Abuel was talking, and Commissioner Shuretti, is that the sales tax, the thing about the sales tax is, it's paid not just by Tuscarus County residents.
Anybody who comes here, right?
Anybody who comes here to shop, to stay, to eat, pays that sales tax that benefits Tuscarus County. So, that's one, one critical plus to the, to the sales tax piece. So, the revenues that come in aren't just 100% burden on the backs of the taxpayers of Tuscarus County, we get additional revenue from the, you know, from the outside. And I think that's extremely important. And, and the other thing I wanted to mention is, we've had a 1% piggyback tax, permissive tax, for over 30 years now. And it has, and this board and previous boards have done a good job at keeping it to the sales tax as far as funding our operational costs. And that gets back to what Commissioner Abuel talked about. There are a number of counties surrounding us that, you know, have, as you said, property tax levies on, levies for 911, levies for children's services and the like. So, you know, that, that again speaks to the importance of having this renewal passed.
Yes, and it's important for the viewers to know, it is a renewal, it's not an addition. So, that's something to keep in mind. We'll be right back with more Across the Isle, stay tuned.
Omni Orthopedics comprehensive programs provide early diagnosis and successful treatment for every musculoskeletal problem. With more than 30 years of orthopedic experience, their physicians offer patient-centered treatment for all ages. From evaluation to rehabilitation, your treatment plan is designed around your needs. Omni Orthopedics specializes in sports medicine, the spine, physical medicine and rehabilitation, foot and ankle, and hand surgery. If pain makes activities like climbing stairs, standing or walking a challenge, turn to the home team at Omni Orthopedics. Their mission is to provide you with the highest quality and most advanced orthopedic services so you can get back in the game. Located in the Oxford Medical Arts Building, Omni offers a full-service facility, including digital x-ray and physical therapy. So, there's no need to travel when quality care is so close to home. Omni Orthopedics, setting the standard in orthopedic care. For the best dining in Northeast Ohio, you need to go and check out John and Cindy Elsasser's Canal Tavern of Zorr. Nestled just outside the historic town of Zorr, Ohio, the Canal Tavern offers every patron an amazing dining experience, including great food, superior customer service, and a comfortable, unique atmosphere. The Canal Tavern is located at 8806 Topath Road in Bolivar, Ohio, and reservations can be made by calling 330-874-4444. The Canal Tavern of Zorr, where history meets great food.
Welcome back to Across the Isle. My name is Gail Garbrandt. Thanks for tuning in. We have three very special guests this afternoon. All three of our Tuscarus County Commissioners, Commissioner Chris Abuel, Commissioner Joe Shuretti, and Commissioner Kerry Metzger. And we have been spending our time today talking about an issue of great importance that's on the ballot in all 81 precincts on Election Day, May 2, 2017, which is not that far off. And that is the renewal of the county's sales tax. So, I wanted to go back to Commissioner Abuel. We were talking about that the sales tax isn't just paid by people who live in Tuscarus County, but visitors here as well.
Right, absolutely. We have, we have a great tourism partners in Tuscarus County. Our Convention and Visitors Bureau does a fantastic job and all of our partners throughout the county do a great job attracting visitors. And that equates, and these numbers come from the state of Ohio, they're not the numbers that come from the CVB or that come from the Commissioners, that come from the state of Ohio. About $398 million was generated in just Tuscarus County last year, in 2016, for travel and tourism.
Wow.
Now, that's associated with everything that's in relation to travel and tourism, that summer, summer help for college kids, everything that's associated with travel and tourism. But that boils down to about $48 million in taxes. And I think it's roughly like 24,000, or 24 million goes to federal, 14 million goes to the state, and then about $9 million stays locally. So, that's huge for us. So, in essence, a lot of the people that come to visit Tuscarus County are paying for the services that we provide to our residents. So, again, this is, it's a, a sales tax is something everybody pays. Of the 6.75% that you pay when you, when you purchase something, 1% stays in Tuscarus County, the other 5.75% goes to the state. So, that 1%, again, to reiterate, it generates about $13 million for us. And a lot of those are from visitors that come here to Tuscarus County.
Well, that's great. Commissioner Metzger, so you had mentioned that it does fund the 911 system. How old is the system we have now?
Well, the system we put in was back in 2005 and it's actually.
So, it's time.
Well, it's actually, at some point, within the next year, year and a half, we're going to have to upgrade to the next generation technology. And so, there's going to be a cost to that. And potentially, the sales tax is going to help us be part of the funding mechanism in order to fund that replacement of the equipment that has to be done by the end of 2018. Because the companies say that it's, they can't supply the parts anymore. It just amazes me that in 10, yeah, 12 years, all of a sudden, the equipment's obsolete.
Right.
But we are moving into other technologies now that will be added to the 911 system, which I think is great, texting and all kinds of other different upgrades to the program itself. So, we're in a process, we're talking about that now with the Sheriff's Department because the Sheriff's Office operates the 911 system with their dispatchers and the like for us. So, it's important, I mean, it's important. And like I said, and that's all part of the public safety that the general fund, or that the general fund funds. But again, as I reiterated before, 57% of that comes from our sales tax.
Well, I can't imagine anyone who would not want the ability to dial 911 when they're in trouble and they need help.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And you know all too well, the Board of Elections.
I was going to mention that.
Well, the issue with the voting machines.
Sure.
You know, this is all technology that eventually has to be replaced at some time. Your personal computer, you have them so many years and then they're, they're obsolete and you have to update them.
I hate that part because I'm right there, right now, you know?
But of course, as we're moving forward this year with the Board of Elections, we just bought new poll books. And now, we're in the process of going into a lease program to be able to get new polling equipment. So, as you know, that, that equipment only lasts so long.
Right. And everyone wants to protect the integrity of the election.
Absolutely.
So, important. And again, the sales tax also helps fund the Board of Elections. So, we can't have elections if we don't have a Board of Elections. And so, again, we need that. And it's amazing because as a country, we have more frequent elections than any other country in the world, and we elect more offices than any other country in the world. So, we do have a kind of a complex system. So, it's important to have all that technology to help us be accurate and to preserve the election and so people have confidence in the system.
Absolutely.
Well, I am confident that all of our viewers are going to go out there and vote and vote for the sales tax because it does touch so many lives. But just to be devil's advocate for a moment, if it wouldn't pass, what would be the next step? What would be the backup plan?
Well, we have the opportunity.
Yeah, we have the, we have the opportunity to take it to the ballot one more time before the sales tax would not, we would lose the sales tax revenue. So, I mean, if it would happen to fail, you know, that would be the next logical step is to go out, maybe make a more aggressive campaign, I guess, to really explain, as we've talked about this afternoon, these issues of what it funds, and then put it back on the ballot again.
Which would cost more money, so.
Which would cost, absolutely would cost. I mean, any, any issue that's put on the ballot, that political subdivision has to pay a portion of those costs for that. And again, we're having all 81 precincts. So, it's a, it's almost as if you're voting in a general election, you know, from that aspect of it, you know, in a gubernatorial or presidential. It's just normally the numbers of votes or people that vote, unfortunately, are usually smaller during the off-year election primaries, so.
If we had the opportunity to be able to present this information to the general public. public and, and get everybody, over the 92,000 folks there to understand the process and how frugal we have been with the dollars and with the indicators we've gotten from the state, and I know when the auditor was here, he showed a PowerPoint presentation, all that information's factual information, and that we can show very easily how, how those dollars come in, how they're spent, and how they're spent wisely. So we get a good bang for our buck here in Tuscarus County. If you do a dollar-dollar comparison with us in other, other communities, I think that we do a very good job in, in making sure that we're getting the best out of the finances that we receive, not only with the sales tax, but the other sources that we receive, that we do a good job at managing the finances here in the county.
Well, I want to congratulate all of you on your great report card. That's wonderful news.
Thank you.
And it's, it's great to know that our public servants are very fiscally responsible. They take their jobs very seriously. I know how busy you are. I want to thank all three of you again, Commissioner Abil, Commissioner, Commissioner Shuretti, and Commissioner Metzger for taking time out. I think this is really helpful. It's a lot of important information. I'm sure there are people who had no idea what a, an important blanket this sales tax renewal is for every resident of the county. So thank you so much for tuning in for Across the Aisle. And we are on TV2 Tuesday nights at 7 o'clock PM, Fridays at 4:30 PM. If you can't watch us at that time, you can go online to WJERTV2.com and find us under Community Programming, Across the Aisle. If you don't get Channel 2, you can actually find us on YouTube under TV2, Across the Aisle, New Philadelphia, Ohio. Thanks again for tuning in. Thanks again to our great commissioner.
Thank you.
And for all of us at TV2, have a pleasant evening.